All right, welcome. I hereby call the city council meeting with a public hearing to order this Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty five. I hereby call this meeting to order. We've already done the flag salutes. We're not going to do the flag salute again. We did that during the urban renewal agency meeting. We have everyone present here and counted for, so everyone's here. I will go right to our action items, resolution one dash two thousand and twenty five, accepting the election results.
Well, I'd like to move to accept the election results of November's election.
It should be right behind your agenda. May I put it to your agenda?
You don't need to make it.
Do two if you don't think you're in the party.
Moving through resolution one dash two thousand and twenty five, resolution approving the city clerk's canvassing of Morrow County elections other than November fifth, two thousand and twenty four, general election. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the election results? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we need to do the oath of office. We're gonna have Mayor Paul Kiefer, Councillor Heather Baumgartner, Councillor Christina Cuevas, and Councillor Brenda Prophet. You are going to be sworn in by Judge Steele.
Nice.
So, I guess I'm first.
Really?
Am I first?
We do have the option to do one at a time, or we can do all at once. It is up to you.
Yes, aye.
Yes. Want to do it all at once?
Together.
Almost separate.
We'll do it group.
Would you like to do it alone?
We'll be group hug and we'll learn. Yeah, put your fist in the chest.
And that's for the we, for the spouses.
So the only thing separately is I'll say, aye, aye, Paul Kiefer, aye, Brenda Prophet, Christina Cuevas, and Heather Baumgartner. So this is all repeat after me. Okay? We can try to do it, right? All right, you please raise your hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then Paul Kiefer.
Brenda Prophet.
Prophet, Christina Cuevas, and Heather Baumgartner.
Heather Baumgartner.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
I will support the constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
I will support the charter and the ordinances of the city of Boardman.
I will support the charter and the ordinances of the city of Boardman.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of.
Faithfully perform the duties of.
City council member for the city of Boardman.
City council member of the city of Boardman.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
You don't know this. Great. Now it's four.
It will go to the approval of minutes, the city council meeting minutes, December third, two thousand and twenty four.
I move to approve the minutes of December third, two thousand and twenty four, city council regular meeting as presented.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussions of the minutes since the recorded minutes?
Can I get clarification on who the second was? I heard two voices.
Yeah.
Sure, keep going.
Christina.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, financial report, Marta.
Thank you. So November is a big month when we receive our, the bulk of our property taxes. The next smaller bulk will be around February to let them do the, the option of the three payments, but the bulk comes in and for our general property taxes, we've collected about ninety-one percent just in the month of November of our property taxes. So that's really good. And also, this is the first time that the North Urban Renewal District is on, is on. We're still working out the details, so it's currently all going into our one account with the county, so we're, but they do have it separated out how much each fund is getting, but we're still working out the final details to have its own separate account. So some of that's a little bit fuzzy there. But know that North Urban Renewal is collecting their taxes as well.
Nice. So they put it all in one check and now you have to divide it amongst the three?
Yes.
Huh.
We, they currently do that for our geo bond and our general property taxes. They're like in one deposit and they get reports that tell them what we'll wear. So this time there's three in one. But we're working on getting that one. It's just, you know, you gotta go in steps.
So will you let us know here when you know which, how much each urban renewal?
So if you look down at the very bottom, oh no, it's not. Yes, combined tip is by, by cash accounts, nevermind. Yes, I'll give you that, and I can send you that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say that where it's readable, because their report is very computer language, like not reader friendly. But our interest rates, you'll see they started to go down just slightly, with the exception of the Vanderbein Savings Account. That one went to five point three percent, but you'll see that the state pulled it up four point nine eight percent. So those are just kind of starting to come down slowly, which that was expected.
Where it says Silver Creek, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven, that's just what we owe them, but, or is that just the amount of money that's in that?
In the retainage account. Yeah, it's just the retainage portion that by law now has to be in its own separate escrow account. And the highest interest rate that is paid to them is point ten percent. That's also under state statute. So those are the escrow accounts that we have.
So we have that just for when they come in with a bill or something to be paid, because it'll eventually be zero out, correct?
Yes, once the project is finalized, this is the final payment that will go out to them, because retain just five percent of whatever monthly amount they're asking for. That's kind of what we get to hold on to, to ensure that they complete the project and clean up all of their stuff and debris.
So Brandon and Silver Creek have not finalized their projects?
As of November, no. And it's also part of, you know, they go through the whole checklist with our engineers, so have they done everything that the engineer is still waiting for, including, you know.
So we're, they're working with that engineer to make sure that everything's done before the final payment is requested.
Yes.
Copy. Any other questions on the budget? All right, we'll move right on. We'll go to our first part of our public comment, pre-race presentation, Marrow County Schools. Well, Wendy River and Sam Boardman, I talked to both of them on Monday, and today is Tuesday, two days after school came back, so they were unable to be they just weren't coming today.
And, and then basketball game tonight.
Yeah, and I didn't reach out to the high school. I just knew, my wife said the kids weren't going to be able to since Christmas break, and Wendy River is not ready either, so expect them to come on the month of February. So the next part is the pre-race presentation by Jonathan Tomlin. He is not able to attend today because he's not feeling very well. You have the information in and.
The document should be that email and then this.
The map. There should be a map included in there. You can see what he was talking about, what his message was.
You know, this is really hard for the audience.
Unless they are, have the agenda online, where they could click it on their phone. Because if they have it online, they can see the exact.
They'll be able to see everything.
I understand that. Do you see anybody in here that has their computer with them?
They don't know, but we're also in the.
Hold up my phone.
Advanced.
Scrolling through every twenty pages.
We're in advanced technology.
If you, if you click on the HTML, it will actually, you can click on the document itself, and it takes you directly to the document. So yeah, don't open the PDF when the HTML on a device is much easier to, to navigate.
PDFs are very hard. A PDF, you gotta scroll through.
Got it? You're welcome.
I have, I have an extra copy of his letter if somebody wants it.
I think they got, yeah.
That should also.
I can't read it, so there's a picture of it.
So.
That's it?
Okay.
All right, so everybody was, everybody's reading with him.
Yeah, questions about it would just give like statements on it or?
Yeah, I would, so the one suggestion, I've, I've talked to Mr. Tomlin. So in the letter, he, he talks about wanting to have a conversation with the city, and this aligns perfectly with a discussion that we're gonna have in March to talk about our capital improvement project. So that was, that's an opportunity that we could then bring this up when we talk about future development and land. There would go a part of our CIP, the five to twenty year plan that we're gonna be working on. So my suggestion would be we could bring it out there. I think we should read this out loud, what he said here, because if he'd been able to come.
He would have said.
He would have done that. I think.
Would you like to read it? Or do you want me to read it?
Well, if you can see that small print, you better.
All right, I'll read it. All right, says Brandon. I had planned to present this in person, but unfortunately, I am very sick and unable to speak without coughing uncontrollably. As a result, I am providing my thoughts in writing. Attached picture below, you'll find a copy of the Loop Road designed by Anderson Perry, featuring a sixty foot width, along with supporting drawings and documents the city has for its in records. In discussing the city's twenty year development plan with Brandon Hammond, he confirmed that the property my family has owned since nineteen eighty-eight aligns closely with the city's long-term goals for future growth. However, I'd like to raise two important points. Following the twenty twenty water and sewer bond mandate and Mayor Kiefer's campaign commitment to provide water and sewer services to all properties within city limits that contribute to the bond, I must note that my two lots, or I must note that two of my lots still lack access to these utilities despite an existing easement that could facilitate this connection right now. My neighbor, the Morrow County Public Works Department, owns a five acre property with a thirty foot easement. Their development efforts have stalled due to the city's requirement for roads to be seventy-five feet wide, leaving them unable to advance beyond the planning stage. I look forward to collaborating with the city and Brandon Hammond to resolve these challenges and identify opportunities that align with the city's long-term vision. Brandon suggested that this meeting would be an ideal starting point, particularly in the context of the city's development goals and efforts to expand the tax base. Thank you again, and I welcome the opportunity to discuss this further. Jonathan Tomlin. I think we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
You bet. Formal proceedings, Boardman zoning map amendment, LND two four dash zero 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 one one. CC memorandum. Zero one zero seven two thousand and twenty five. Yeah.
In your binder, we'll have these to read.
Oh, you have it on paper, Jim.
In, in your binder, for the script for you to read.
Oh, for the script? Oh, there's a script I gotta read? Oh. That's right, we're in the formal proceedings. The public hearing on Boardman zoning map amendment, LND two four dash zero 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 one one, city of Boardman applicant. This request is to amend the zoning map, reducing the area of BTA transmission line easement to be only within the commercial on the south to allow development. The subject property is tax lots one hundred and one hundred two of a successors map, four and twenty-five E sixteen B, and is located both east and west of South Main Street and north of Oregon Trail Boulevard. The hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. First, the staff report followed by any additional that has been received. Questions of staff from the city council, public testimony in the following order. Testimony in favor. Testimony opposed to the amendment, neutral testimony if any. Questions of staff if any by the city council, and then discussion by the city council. A decision may be made by the city council at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date in the future. If the matter is reset to a time and date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city clerk. I will then call the people who want to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Because the hearing is being recorded, please state both your name and address for the record, and when you come to the podium. Please kiss, keep testimony concise and to the point. Given to the number of people here, we will not limit testimony to. Please note, failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the city council and other parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. Prohibits an appeal to the land use board appeal based on that issue. At this time, I ask members of the city council to disclose any ex parte contact. Please indicate the nature of your contact. Is there anybody who wishes to disclose? Okay, having hearing that, planning official Carolyn Plank will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Kiefer. So this is, this, this was initiated based on the city's acquisition of the property owned by Mary and Carol Mon. It is the property just to the north here on both sides of the freeway. It's the beginning of what we've been calling the park blocks. When we purchased this property from Mr., Mr. and Mrs. Mon, they had already had some conversation about selling some of the property outside of the easement area to two adjoining property owners. The specifics of that are not specifically important to this decision, but it will play a little bit into some of the conversation I share that's been going on with ODOT over the last today. So we are. This, this did go in front of the planning commission. The first planning commission hearing was in November. The, we received the letter, the first letter that's attached to the, to the packet was received from ODOT, and it is, has a date of October twenty eighth. ODOT requested that we do at a minimum a trip generation letter or trip, trip, trip generation report, which we had the planning commission continue the hearing. Anderson Perry did that work for us, and we went back in December with the trip generation letter, and the planning commission adopted findings, and they have recommended this request to you with a do adopt recommendation. Specifically, the request is to narrow the BPA transmission line easement. So if you were to look at the zoning map, the BPA transmission line easement escapes the actual easement boundaries in a couple of different locations. And that limits the ability to do development on both the north and the side, and the south side of that easement in the property that the city has acquired. It's a total of about five acres in what would become five different parcels as we, as we divide the property and how roads are arranged and all of those different pieces. One of those parcels is on the east side. It's adjacent to David Jones's manufactured home park. The other four parcels are on the west side. And it gets to be four parcels, because the fortune at the south end is separated by Tatum, where it will connect eventually to Oregon Trail Boulevard. And then on the north side, as we build First Street to go up and mirror the loop roads that we did on the east side, we're gonna mirror that on the west side. So there will be a southwest First Street, and that separates the land on the north side of the BPA line into two parcels. Again, all five parcels equal about five acres. The largest is about two point four, two point four acres. So again, it comes to you from the planning commission with findings that, that address the trip generation letter. And the question that ODOT is asking is how are you going to address the traffic impacts from the change in zoning? So we received, so in your packet for tonight, additional things from, from the planning commission. You have the memorandum I wrote, but you also have a letter of support from Hardip Singh. It's an email form. And then you have a second letter from ODOT that we got yesterday. It's dated December thirty first, that arrived yesterday. And then the last piece is a draft zoning map that is at your J S this evening. It's pretty uncolorful. So the second letter that we got from ODOT, after I read it, I really wasn't quite sure what they were asking for. So I called Teresa Penninger, who is the signatory of the second letter, and we spent over two hours on the phone today kind of talking through all of this. And I'm, I'm gonna try to give you guys the really short version of the really long version that I had with Teresa. That really short version is when we, as we dedicate roads and we divide property and we think about what's gonna happen with this property going forward. When you look at the trip generation letter that's attached to the original findings from the planning commission, it talks about those five pieces of property, and it really assumes worst case scenario. It assumes a retail environment. But what I could tell you is that on the property that's adjacent to David Jones, he's one of the parties that Mr. Mon had been in contact with, and, and they were in conversation about David Jones acquiring that. It's, it's less than an acre. And if we continue that and David Jones expands his manufactured home park, we're talking about four to eight manufactured homes, which is a total average daily trip of fifty. So where the trip generation letter assumes a PM peak of, I think, sixty-one trips, we actually end up with an actual average daily trip, total daily trips of less than that number. So the, the assumptions that are made in the trip generation letter, when we look at what might really happen on the ground are significantly different or less. Same thing with the parcels to the south. Again, they're assuming a, a fairly impactful retail development. But we know that on the three quarters of an acre adjacent to the senior center, we're probably not gonna get another Dollar General. The, the reality of that kind of intensive retail activity happening there is probably fairly small. Same thing with the adjacent to the, the part that's behind the library and adjacent to the two properties that haven't developed. We are hoping that some development will happen there. Historically, some of the options have been a mixed use, maybe a restaurant on the bottom and apartment on the top. Allowable use, but, but probably not as intensive as a, as a retail with a PM peak as high as a trip generation letter identifies. So even if you were to assign all of the, even if you were to take all of the trips that are proposed with, that are, are outlined in the trip generation letter, it's about, I did the math earlier, four hundred and fifty trips. And when you go back and you look at the Main Street IMP and the TSP and the downtown development plan, and you look at the total number of trips that have been assigned to happen in South Main Street, it's about fourteen hundred and fifty plus or minus. We know that our current trips on Main Street are about eight thousand a day, and if you assign ten percent to the PM peak, that's about eight hundred trips. So if you take eight hundred trips that we know are already happening, based on what's hap, what's out there, and you add the four hundred and fifty plus or minus that the trip generation letter identifies, we're still under the fourteen hundred and fifty trips per PM peak that we've accounted for in the IMP and the T, and the downtown development plan. Now, those are older documents, and you could, you could assume, you actually should probably assume that those numbers are low. So we probably have a cushion that's larger than that. Now, the IMP, as, as we've had a lot of conversations about the Main Street IMP, we know what the Main Street IMP's objective is. ODOT wants to protect their facility, and, and it has things in there like the ride-in, ride-out, those types of things. That's not the conversation we're having. We're not having that conversation at this moment. We're talking about, are there adequate trips available in the system to support this change in zoning? My assessment is yes. What ODOT is asking is, how can you support that? How can you say that that's the case? Well, I just kind of did the math. It was back in the napkin and I did the math. What I have committed to ODOT is that, should you approve this tonight? We do not have an adopting ordinance drafted. We did not pre-assume what your decision tonight would be. But should you approve it and direct us to a draft that adopting ordinance, I'm gonna go through that map that I just did in my head and shared with you and build it into that adopting ordinance, and we're gonna talk through in that adopting ordinance why we meet the requirements of the transportation planning rule with what we're proposing here. I know, I just thought a whole lot of planner ease, and my apologies to all of you. I'm happy to answer questions. The only pushback we're getting on this is ODOT, and it has to do with trips. And I think there are plenty of trips in the system available to support this zone change. We do have a proposed, we do have a potential development proposal from Mr. Singh, who has provided the letter of support. He is the developer that did the Silver Garden Hotel. We are actively working with him between myself, Rolf, Mike Lees on development of the Loop Roads on the west side, in support of his development. Mr. Mon was also talking to him about acquiring that particular piece of property on the north side. If he acquires that two point four acres and adds it to the remainder of what he has after he does the Silver Garden Hotel development, he is proposing a, I I will share this much. He is proposing a retail type of development with the potential of a, a drive-through coffee place and other types of retail activities. There is a proposed anchor. I can't tell you what that is, but it would be a really positive development for Boardman. So I, I don't wanna find, I don't want ODOT to get in the way of us figuring out how to make development happen.
So, so when you say the Silver Garden, you're talking the empty lot next to America's Best or what?
No, this side, right? Right here, right here.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So it was a hotel, a restaurant, and the RV resort proposal that, that was approved by the planning commission almost a year ago.
What are we trying to do on it?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, is that still here or not?
Yes. Yes, they, we are actively working on design with them for the road network.
So that's the old BP lot? Is that where we are?
No.
No, it's the, it's behind where the no man has to sit? No, well, kinda. It wraps around, it wraps around the roadway.
So it's around roadway, I see. And then the property. It's on the that side, west side of Roanoke. Okay.
So the, the zone changes to commercial?
Right. So on the north side, we're mirroring or we're, we're, we're making it the same to the property as to the north and for the properties on the south, it's gonna, so on the north, it'll be commercial highway subdistrict or tourist commercial, and on the south, it'll just be commercial.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, because he has a pre-existing non-conforming use. By expanding it, he will have to meet some current development standards.
So making that change would help him develop as well back there?
Yeah, it would allow him to add a, a couple of manufactured homes sites.
And then this big piece of changing to commercial allows for development on that piece.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, you can't do, you can't develop.
No, with the, with the BPA, with BPA transmission line, there are some things you could. With the, with the BPA, with BPA transmission line, there are some things you could do, but not at the scale that could happen. Um, the other good thing that happens, so if you think about the IMP, there is an, what's called an interim road. That connects first to main. And in their development proposal, they have to build that interim road. So we, we're actually, the development that Mr. Singh is proposing and Boardman. Gets us a long way in meeting the requirements of our, of our, um, Main Street IMP on the west side.
And they're gonna be responsible to build and building.
Yep, they have responsibility for the portions of the road that are on their property, the city will, the city will match that. Um, will have to build the portion, Oregon Trail Boulevard and the portion of first, and then there's a portion of front that will be. Partially responsible for rebuilding, but we have another development application where we should be able to get another portion of. Half of Front Street on the north side also done.
And the rest of Tatum.
So I kind of went.
Right, we have to connect Tatum to Oregon Trail Boulevard, that would be the city, the city does have some development responsibility. In connecting in the loop road connections, yeah.
Kind of went out of order on a public hearing, I kind of went to, I dropped down to discussion by the city council. So I kind of went, uh, out of order.
I still have something I wanna say, from John.
I gotta jump back up.
Thank you.
No.
So, Carla, just to clarify though, this is the city's land.
This is the city's land.
So in order for somebody to acquire it, whether it's to expand the trailer park, we would have to surplus that.
Right, I mean, there's a whole lot of process.
Whole process, so I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm just wanna clarify that because. Although you said ODOT was making a lot of assumptions, I feel like you were making a lot of assumptions and saying. You know, that he would just do this, we're gonna be new four to eight trailers and, you know, but like, those are your.
Those, those are the conversations I had with Mr. Jones and yes, we, we're in the process of dividing this property as well. Once divided, then yes, these properties are gonna have to go through the same surplus process. And, and one of these is owned by the Urban Renewal Agency and the other one is owned by the city. And I can never remember which one is which. But, you know, when we get to the surplus, we'll get it right, because we didn't get it right in the, in the purchase.
On the east is Urban Renewal.
Okay. Yeah. So yes, ha, ha, just so you know, there is a lot of process that's ahead.
Right, right, I just wanted to clarify that because it was, it was almost like you were saying, like, it's likely that this is gonna happen when. We haven't decided that that is what we are doing.
We all. Formally, but when we talked about acquiring this, all of that was discussed, that this, all these sales of these pieces, that was all included in our. Original discussion.
Mr. Mr. Maun had made commitments to, to Mr. Jones and to Mr. Singh and so, uh. Yeah, I mean.
And it was a way for us to recoup some of the money too. That we put into it, we were gonna sell some of it to get some of the money back, the six hundred thousand. Was it not?
Uh, so. This. Oh, are we not gonna, we're gonna let you do your job and then we'll have a discussion?
We just gotta get some clarity for the. Now calling those who wish to testify in favor of the proposed, proposed amendments. Anyone who wishes to oppose? Is there anyone that wishes to have any neutral testimony? Now you may ask your questions, we're in order now.
So, so on the trip generation, does it make any difference? In this whole thought about what would happen to that little, where. Oh. When we were talking about watermelon zone, you know, that little, that little place, that little.
The little lot that's there that I couldn't even tell you who owns it right now, that. We did not include that in the rezone, so it's still gonna be zone BPA transmission line.
Oh, really?
It's not our.
You're talking the little lot next to where CenturyLink is, is on your top mountain?
That's not our.
No, I'm talking about. I'm talking about on this side, which would have been. Behind what used to be the Shell Station. You know, the little lot, set up the watermelons on, on this side.
Yep, so that's, that's owned by, uh, Reyna Pacheco.
Yes.
And, um. That is currently zoned commercial, tourist commercial.
But would that have, would she, could she make our numbers of trips? Get to be a problem, I guess is what I'm asking.
No, because that, her property was accounted for in the IMP.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what's the definition of the tourist commercial?
So, the difference between, um, commercial and tourist commercial. Um, and it actually has two different, two different titles in, on the map, it's highway subdistrict and in the text, it's tourist commercial. So. The commercial that's down here, um, authorizes a few different uses than what's authorized in the tourist commercial. The tourist commercial purpose says it is to serve the traveling public. Uh, more focused on that than really providing services for those of us who live here, that's why you see hotels in that zone because. They're allowed in that zone, they're not allowed in this, in the regular commercial zone, that's probably the biggest difference.
I think it allows for restaurants and gas stations, maybe?
Um.
Something like that.
Well, I, I have sadly, um, the tourist commercial actually did allow, we recently changed that. It did allow for truck stops and we took that out because we figured out we couldn't get trucks in and out off of the Main Street interchange. So we did a text amendment to the tourist commercial two, three months ago, we finished that. And so with that text amendment, we took truck stops out and we added retail. Because retail was not allowed, which means your establishment actually.
Was not supposed to be there.
Would not have been cited in its location, right? So we cleaned it up and, yeah.
Are any other questions? There are no further questions, I would close the public testimony portion of this hearing, the public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. There any additional discussion by the city council because we need to decide. Do we want to continue this matter for another reason? Or do we want to approve, deny or modify? Uh, and include direction to staff to prepare the next series of adoption documents? Those are the decisions we need to come up with and I think it's just consensus, isn't it? You say we weren't, or do you want a motion or a consensus on the direction of, because you said the documents weren't ready to vote on.
Right, but I need to know clearly what your decision is so that. Yeah, I would prefer that you make this by motion and, and any adoptive ordinance, so do that again by motion as well.
I was just looking at the planning commission recommendation, I was looking at the. Planning official recommendation and then the planning commission recommendation. And I, uh, just my thought is, I think it's a pretty good thing for Boardman right now. To have a motion if we want to direct Carla. The, do we have?
So I could move to direct the city staff. To, um, move forward with. The zone change. And the easement. A readjustment. Is that right?
Yeah, and prepare an adoption ordinance to that effect. As stated.
So move.
That makes it really hard for me to write it down.
I think it needs to be specified, um, the, whether we, we label it or something because. Um, I feel like it's being a lot generic. Not a mute.
Well, but I think that it's, we're, it's about this, I mean, we're, we just did what we just did a hearing on.
Well, I think what you're saying is we need to be very specific about it so that it's not so broad and then we have to come, yes, and then we have to come back and try to change it again.
You could utilize the, the request line. On the planning commission findings. Where it says to accomplish a minor amendment.
All right. Um, I move to amend the zoning map, reducing the area of BPA transition line. Easement to be only within the central and the south will allow development, the subject property is tax code one hundred and one hundred and two. Map, four N twenty-five E sixteen B and is located both east and west of South Main Street and north of Oregon Trail Boulevard.
Scratch that, north of Oregon Trail, because some of it's south of Oregon Trail. Sorry.
There is some that's north of Oregon Trail.
This, the change is just south of Oregon Trail and then it's. Just scratch the Oregon Trail part of that.
So just go to text, it says four N twenty-five E sixteen B period.
Okay.
What do you think? Okay, so we got amended motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, got motion and a second, have any discussion on that before we vote? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have, would be six and a one, six ayes, one no. Okay. At the night of resolution two dash twenty twenty-five charter twenty twenty-four update.
So we just need to make a motion to approve the election.
Correct. Uh, Boardman Home Rule Charter. I can do this one. I move to approve resolution two dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution amending the city of Boardman Home Rule Charter. As approved by the city electors at the November twenty twenty-four election.
Okay, so I got a motion, do I have a second? Machine has a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Resolution three dash twenty twenty-five adopting personnel policy.
So yes, that's all we need, it is there before you, um, I, I've included the summary right there, if you wanna have any questions, there were seventeen. Updates.
Several.
Any clarification, again, this went through the attorneys, this was a very. Very.
Long.
Very.
Exciting.
Lengthy process, this is my entire time. That I've been here, just had to clean up again, some of the things, uh, we had to clean up Oklahoma Foot Fennel, we had to clean that up. A, a lot of it was just language.
And you changed the, um. From monthly to bi-weekly.
Correct.
Thank you.
So does this?
With our, hours earned for vacation.
Hours earned for about zero to five years, it's eight hours instead of six point eight.
Yeah.
So does this give counselors PTO and vacation time?
That you charted us.
I move to approve resolution. Three dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution adopting personnel policy and repealing resolution six dash twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion and a second, is there any other discussion regarding that?
Does this?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Does this affect the police department as well?
So the only thing it affects with unions is if it's not in the contract. If it's in their contract, the contract, like Teamsters and the PD within, then.
Contracts.
On credit cards.
Do you feel like this is a better policy?
Uh, it's, it's just, it's just.
Language.
Clean.
Cleaning up the language.
Well, and you've gotta know until lately, we would not have fallen under that FMLA.
Mm-hmm.
And stuff.
Because of how it was written or whatever.
No, because we tried to keep the employee number under twenty-five. And now we're over that and so that requires a lot of language change. In our personnel policy.
Thank you.
But FMLA is a good thing.
Oh, no, yeah, I mean, and eventually you can't work with ten people, I mean, if you're gonna grow.
What was the need for nine hundred and sixty hour cap, I would simply?
So it is what was, Teamsters did, we just matched what Teamsters had, uh, originally it was no cap. So Teamsters had a nine sixty.
Well, PD, they didn't wish it at nine sixty.
Yeah, they did that too, didn't they?
So what happens to the sick hours that they go over the nine sixty?
Uh, there is one employee and they were grandfathered in.
But what, how is it written in there, so if they are up to nine hundred and sixty hours, does that roll over into like a PTO, vacation, do they just? They don't accrue anymore.
Until they use them. Until they use them.
Yeah.
And when they retire, it goes into their person.
But they get credit for it, credit, yeah, it goes into the first formula, which is about as possible to figure out. So that nine sixty.
Professional study, like, nobody can figure out whatever they need to go.
They can only approve nine hundred and sixty-six leave hours?
Yeah, I left, um, more kind of school district, they've entered me.
What, how much?
Eight hundred and eighty.
I lost it.
We had an employee once that was trying to get a year's worth of hours and sick leave.
Why would we?
It's definitely a very smart thing.
Why would we limit people sick leave for people who come to work?
Especially if you're.
It is what they negotiate, Teamsters has a PD.
But I'm just saying, that's a bad negotiation process and remember, why would you put a gap, why would you put a cap? On the number of sick leave hours that go into your purse formula when you retire?
Now, PD and their law, and their, their union contract, are they paid out partial or? Sick leave?
That would be an act sick.
So if the union, why would we do it to our staff if we know that that's not the best way to do it for non-union members?
Just consistency. And even, no one was even near it, no one's even near it.
What it is if you teach twenty-five years.
Yeah.
And you, and you come to work.
Correct, yeah, there's just a.
I just think it's a bad move to, uh, limit people who come to work to accrue the most sick leave and hours they can. That will ultimately, uh, go into their retirement when they lot, when they leave, so that's just personal. Okay. We're in discussion, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, go on to the next one, we need to elect a council president, every year we elect a council, uh, president. So I, I think the way we're gonna do it this time, if there's multiple people that would like to be council president. Uh, then we'll just vote for those people, or if there's only one person that wants to be a council president, we'll vote for that person.
Are we not to nominate people?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Ethan Salata.
Uh, I have a question first. What, what does the council president do?
Take something that they hear. Yeah.
When, if he's gone, you're. So you'll get to run the meeting, it's just like, uh. It's like the second hand, so if the mayor is not president, present, then you, you're the other one. So we have one nominated for, uh, council president, anyone else would like to nominate or become, because you can nominate yourself too.
I would like to nominate Richard Rockoff.
You have to make it harder.
And I'd like to nominate myself. I know.
You got three people. Something about this, we have three people who would like to, uh. Be council president, uh, we'll just go by one by one and vote, um. And, uh. Just makes it hard because we have three good people who would be, do a good job. And, uh. I just wanna say, regardless of who votes for who, I think. Any of the three would do a very good job for council president. So. I'm gonna start with Karen Pediger. Who would you like to vote for? What did, what did you say? Did you think I was gonna nominate? Are you really making this? Oh, I didn't mean to do that, I was just.
I wanna be one, so, no.
Who would you like to vote for?
Ethan.
Are you gonna keep track of this for?
I am keeping tracks.
Richard. Who would you vote for?
I, I guess I could vote for myself. I didn't wanna be weird about it.
I'll stick with the person I nominated.
I, uh, I voted for, uh. Heather Lastack, but I'm gonna give somebody else an opportunity, no offense, but I'm gonna vote for Ethan.
I'll vote for Ethan.
Yeah, I'll vote for myself.
I'm gonna vote Heather.
So that makes it a tie.
I have three votes for Ethan, two votes for Richard, two votes for Heather.
I just have one question, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so if, if Mayor Cooper's not available and Ethan's not available.
I think he go to the office tenure, maybe that's what we've done in the past?
That would probably be a rare occasion, I don't think we've. That would probably be a rare occasion. I don't think we've.
And sometimes the mayor would ask someone to do it. I think.
It's just sometimes, cause Ethan, you're on call sometimes. So that's why I was wanting to ask.
Works.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the nomination.
So we need to appoint. We need to have an action.
I'd like to move to appoint Ethan Salada, council president.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion over that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we're at the point where we need to appoint a twenty twenty-five twenty. Budget officer. That's you.
I'm going to appoint Martha Baras as budget officer for the city of Boardman.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to approve the twenty twenty-five budget calendar to your board.
I move to approve the twenty-five twenty-six budget calendar for the city of Boardman.
One second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The next thing we need to do is reappoint budget committee Emerald Lanas and Sonya Neal.
Did Sonya reapply? Does she wanna do it?
I did not get anything in writing, but verbally she did tell me she was interested in serving again.
Cause I was just saying those two different, one on paper and one on.
Well, I'd like to move to appoint.
Oh, there it is. I looked around.
I.
And Sonya Neal to the budget committee term ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven.
Second that.
Motion and a second.
I probably have to sit out.
Yes, cause you're.
Cause it's my sister.
You only, you would only have to if there was a financial.
I don't think, I, that's why, that's why I brought it up. That's all.
I don't think you would have to. It's not a conflict of interest because it's not a financial.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I I you, I feel comfortable that you should be able to vote.
Okay.
Those have been seconded.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was.
Any other discussion? Uh all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The next one is holiday decorating committee appointment. It's Brandon Cameron.
Oh, the list is, oh, I thought you said get on that. Oh, uh the committee is right there. They've all been asked. They've all agreed. To participate and very excited actually to get started. So all I said I do it. You did everything.
Yeah.
Really did.
I believe it was last meeting.
It was last meeting.
It's on.
It is true.
So do I, so do I need to sit out this one too?
I move to appoint the listed individuals as presented to the holiday decorating committee. Paul Kiefer, Ethan Salada, Christina Cuevas, Mark Baras. Amanda Nichols, Tony Cornell, Juan from Barrow and Natasha Law.
Nice.
A second.
You have a lot of people that'll do a lot of work. Thank you. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm on the committee.
It's finally happened.
That's cause you hog them all.
What happened with her?
You hog them all.
Oh, look who's on the pack committee.
Development Code Comprehensive Plan Public Advisory Committee Appointment.
I move to appoint listed individuals.
Sorry, we have one change.
You have one change.
Actually, is it in, is it in the motion?
It is in the motion.
Okay, so if you do the motion as presented, you'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay. I move to appoint the listed individuals as amended the Development Code Comprehensive Plan Public Advisory Committee. The change is to remove Krista Price, replacing her with Kathy Street and changing the organization from local title company to special district representative. And the listed individuals are Christina Cuevas, Jack Grecy, Zach Grecy, Shar Wies, Isaiah Valencia, Michael Graham, Leon Gibb, Vincent Guerrero, Walter Ross. Student uh from Riverside High School is unnamed, Stephanie Case, Mike Lees. And Kathy Street and Dawn Hurt.
So I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ethan, sorry Ethan.
No, I heard Ethan. I heard him first.
Ethan's the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. We're at the time for our other public comment. Comment. Is there anybody that wish to uh have public comment that filled out, would like to share anything? Right, having near hearing none, we'll go right to the police report.
There for you. Uh she still goes at a meeting, so is uh Captain Dieter.
Any questions about the police report? Questions or comments?
It's like. Total incidents have gone down. I suppose that's a good thing.
The only thing I'd like to comment on is I've seen that uh. I think the police must have a Facebook page now and they posted um.
A video.
A video.
A recruitment video.
Which was really nicely done.
Very.
And so I hope that uh I'm sure that he will come and do. When they finish their year end, they usually come and give us a a report. And so I'm. Guess I would be expecting him to show up on February with that uh.
Year review.
Uh and the Facebook uh post. Cause that was.
Recruitment video. And was it really well?
It really was. And it, I think eight thousand or so views or if not more.
Really?
They were shared quite a bit.
It really was. And I, we're working on getting on our website as well, right?
That would be really good to have. It was exciting to uh. I think what I really liked about it was the. The local aspect of recruiting and hiring locals to be able to. To be a police officer important. That was very cool.
And it was a local production. I mean, Mario.
Yeah, and that that that's super exciting that he uh has that business to where we can utilize that. And uh so that was, that was, that was just exciting. I thought that was a real good plug for our police department. Building Department uh report.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi, question.
So um sorry, I have wrong glasses on. This has been pretty slow. Usually it's pretty slow around the holidays. Um it'll pick up. Mid-February, maybe early March. Our numbers are down a little bit, which would be expected. But things are moving forward. Any questions?
I was doing just a little tallying on the map and the nine seven eight one eight and Boardman did just at five hundred permits in the last twelve month.
Say that again. I'm sorry. I have a background noise.
I just did a bit of math and Boardman and the moral county nine seven eight one eight zip code area. Did right at five hundred permits total. Comparatively with moral county, here again, Gillum, and their combined totals. Don't even come close.
Right.
We're busy here.
Most, yeah, most of what's going on is North County. That means Boardman. So yeah, Boardman is still gone. Uh we have one builder who just started putting in more uh foundations. So that's a good sign.
And we have fifty forty-nine new homes. In our area.
Impressive.
And only eight mobile homes. So that's a good comparison.
Yep, stick build is.
Any other questions, Glenn?
Say again?
I was just asking if any of the council members had a question for you.
Right on.
All right. Thanks, Glenn.
Yep, you bet.
Public Works Department, December twenty twenty-four.
Ross here.
Hey, Ross.
Hey.
Anybody got any questions for Ross?
Are we almost done with the new meter installs or the big project we were doing?
The radios?
The radios, sorry.
We're real close. We're done with all the radios.
That you have.
That we have, yes. Cause we added. Put radios on all the new meters that we put in and so we'll be getting more radios.
Gotcha.
As we go. And then we have ones, so we helped out. They had some to echo the summer meters that we don't have radios on. So as we, mostly those, several of those we got replaced.
How do you know if you have a radio on your meter?
If you had your house removed?
Yeah, or what have I? So I open up my box. How do I know if they're? You can't really tell.
Because they had touch read before, so it's the same.
Yeah, cause it, as far as what you can see, it's still has wires to go to the, that's bad. Just, so there are wires to that black thing.
Yeah.
That's the radio.
That hurts the black thing before though.
Yeah, so you wouldn't know the difference.
Probably not. Probably just change the part that goes to that. And that pad changes.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of a touch read pad, you take the touch read and plug it into the radio, the radio. It's put in the lid. Yeah. So it's a bulk here. If you look underneath, it's bulk here.
It's underneath by.
Yeah, but before underneath, it just had a little round disc with a small black thing there. Now it's got a box under it. Well, we really don't want to have people that, you know, we.
Yeah, you're not supposed to.
Yeah.
They're heavy. It opens.
They really break.
They're not, they are. You got, you you really do gotta know what you're doing.
If you ever wanna open it up, just call the city. We'll come back.
That's probably another reason why we're having to get more.
Because it's people don't call us.
A lot of them have been broken.
It's act like it's a sin. Yeah, it's a sin. It is, it's a sin.
You'll have to do penance if you start playing with it. How's the new truck?
Pardon?
How's the new truck?
Nice.
The back truck?
Yeah. How would you know if I, if you, if you were in the older part of town, how would I know if you put in a new meter for me?
Put a new meter in?
Well, the.
Or the radio?
Yeah.
You probably wouldn't. Well, they do stick, they stick up just a little bit more than the old ones. But you probably wouldn't notice.
So as a homeowner, when I go out there to do what I've always done and shut my water on and off.
Well, when you turn it over, there'll be a box under the lid. Rather than just a.
They're written hard.
I guess my, where I'm going there is my question is, how would I know not to do that if I hadn't been told? That my meter had been changed out. When you go through that. Yeah, we, we did send some notifications when I first started and we talked about doing like a sign or a sticker or something, but that was years ago. Our adventures ago. That was like over a year ago when we talked about, hey, we should label something. We need to notify. There, that's. And we were gonna take off the price like, hey, we don't wanna charge anybody if they come and do it, right?
I just.
Could it be a comment on the water bill? Cause remember if you.
I don't. Nobody looks at the water bill that gets it.
Oh, good one, water bill.
Well, me too. I don't.
Well, I don't think it's gonna matter. You're just gonna open it in.
No, but I guess, I guess what I'm. He he understood where I was going with this roundabout comment is that. That if I don't know, you've given me something new and I knew how to fool around in the old one.
So radio reads. Send the reading automatically consistently to the satellite, reports to our computer program. So when it's not reading, when something's disconnected, it sends an alert. And then we send public works out there.
So.
You don't wanna get caught in the act.
No, I'm assuming the public works won't know.
Oh, they'll know.
They'll know.
In a half a day.
We, you get notified, no.
No, he says, it sounds like you get a notification.
Never mind. I don't care. Let them tear them up.
Yeah. Come down.
So just clarifying, there is no cost to that anymore?
I I can't remember what we did. I'd have to look at the fees. You would have had no pay.
There, no, you can't change that on the fee schedule because I believe it's in the code or.
Correct. Yeah.
I don't know that we've ever removed it. No.
I know we talked about it.
It's not just.
Probably should if you want people to come. Yeah, I know. I know, I don't, I wouldn't wanna spend twenty bucks.
Nope.
Is it? So it's twenty bucks to have you shut it off and twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna waive those fees. I know we do, but I'll look at that. I remember.
Well, like if you have water break or you're getting your sprinklers installed.
That's why you turn it off yourself. So you don't have.
That's why we.
That's exactly right.
That's why they don't wanna show you how.
Well, and that's also why to buy one of those keys is kinda difficult.
It's actually not that hard.
I I had, I had to go to PGE to get mine made a long time ago.
Well, now you can buy a.
They're not expensive. I got about fifteen of them at home.
Go to Ralph, go to Ralph. How Ralph will send off the water. All right, um. Any other questions for public works? Fighting Department. You have to speak a lot today.
Nothing other than the written report unless you have questions.
Any questions? For Perlin.
We're having fun.
All right, now to the city manager report.
Okay, and I, and I will be real quick. So the very first thing, it talks about the strategic plan. So on Carla's report, you see T S P E O A, H and A, P M P, uh B D C, C P K. Uh all of those, all of those, when we meet and we're gonna do a work session in February, that is like that master plan. Combining all of that, getting this overarching goal of what the city wants to look like in twenty years, that is what we're gonna start kicking off. So the normal plan has been, is done and what I say, uh we had about a hundred and seventy-eight communities, sixty-eight high school, a hundred and sixty-three surveys from those. They gathered some information. They're gonna present that. We're gonna talk about it. And then the next step will be to take that information. And then go do this overarching, big master plan of moving forward and working that. So. When we talk about, we have the C I P for five years. It's gonna be a C I P for twenty years. Then we're gonna have this master plan for twenty years. And then whoever comes in, the council place, the staff, it is just a clear, hey, this is where we're going. This is what we're trying to get to. Okay? So that's February workshop. That will be um exciting. And the other thing to go along with Karen. So we have the news and notices. We've had news and notices on our website forever. When we switched the website, um they could not carry over everyone who had already signed up. So people had to re-sign up again and it, it was very cumbersome. And when we initially talked with the website, they said we could not do a bulk signup. It had to be individually. Well, apparently that's not true. So we are going to do a bulk signup. Based on our utility con, the contacts that we have. Um and it will be sent out to them. They will, it will be an email. And if we have a phone number, they'll get a text. People will have the opportunity, if they don't wanna receive a text or an email, there's a very clear way, like A stop texting me, they can opt out. But if we wanna talk about informing our community, this is how we'll do it. Email and text, no one has to sign up. We will sign up for them and then the community has an opportunity to opt out. Fantastic way. Most people, regardless of age, has a phone or they have us an email. So that that will be the next thing. And then when we talk about all these plans and things that we're doing moving forward, that we can notify and they'll get instant uh information. So.
I like. Except they get text, 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 email, email, email. And I'm like, wow. So.
I just got a question about the responses. That was for the survey, right?
Correct.
The cards are separated. Are we concerned? You know, I counted about four, was it four or nine responses total?
Yeah, we sent, and that is included. We sent twenty-three. Cards out.
So twenty percent responded roughly.
And and it was encouraging that the uh the company that did this, they thought it was good. They thought the percentage was good. They thought um the diversity was good uh that we had back. And and I said, oh, will you please share that with the council?
It'll be interesting to see how the. The chambers go, how how they are.
Their survey that they.
The B C D A survey.
So. I call them both the same. Yeah, uh they're probably different. It'll be interesting. I I thought that the questions were kind of different. So I was very specific on the way I I answered. Uh I did not want to type on my phone a response. So I was very limited on what I responded to. Some questions I don't think they needed to know. But it was. It was very. I don't know. I I it, I guess. I don't know, I, I, I guess my first, my part was was the purpose of the B C D A. I don't know, so on the survey, I didn't know what the purpose of the B C D A was, so I didn't know how to answer. Is it a school? Is it the park? Is it the city? Or is it all of it, I don't know what their goal is, so it was really difficult for me to answer, and my wife wouldn't tell me how she answered, so.
Thank you, bring up a good point, though, like unless you're involved in, say, politics or, uh, local government, or maybe an entity that has used B C D A, you would have no idea what B C D A is, what its function is, who the board members are, where the money spent, any of that, because it's just B C D A, we just assume we know. That's just my take on what you just.
If I would, the only, the only confusion part I had of it is, if I was a person who wasn't involved in city government, I would have thought B C D A is part of the City of Portland government. Just based on some of the thing, on the question, I, what do you want in the city, what do you want done in the City of Oregon, that's like well, is, whose question is that, is that the City of Oregon question, or is that a B C D A question, or? So I don't know, that was the only confusion part I had of it, um, so I, I hope to get responses from it, you know, I remember the last survey, there was some very similar questions from the last B C D A survey, the ones, so.
So, and when it comes to community input, I look at, like, all of these committees that we have, we have really tried to get like, a diverse group of individuals, I mean, I, I was definitely disappointed, because in my mind, I was thinking, oh, we're, I want to get like two thousand.
That's true.
Like way overreaching, but at least within the committees, we're trying to get a different group, and, and there's several committees, there's a lot of opportunities for people to give input. Um, I even had to thought, like, because we talked about business licenses today, and we're gonna have, uh, an out, a community outreach, which we will share out on this news notices, why don't we do that with the business license? So we have a basic concept, why not just have an opportunity for people to come in, thinking, I want to wait, make sure our platform's up, but news and notices, hey, we're gonna be talking about business license, hey, we're gonna, and then another time talk about addressing, trying to get some input as well, so.
Any other questions about the City Manager Report?
Um, on number three, with regards to the city fees, I think, um, Mara brought it up one time, uh, with the um, online, um, you know, the ability to pay online, um, for the monthly, like, water sewer, um, but then we're having to pay, right, for the card fees, right, and it's kind of like, depending on the number of people that use it and whatnot, like how much we end up having to pay. And I saw somewhere else, some other town or somebody, um, that they also added because of that, um, because again, not everybody has a great budget, they added the option for people to do it, but by putting in their bank information, um, so that you don't get those same fees. Um, so you would do your, you know, like if you're paying by, almost like by check, right?
They don't charge you a fee to.
And then you don't get a, a fee.
We do. We have that?
Yeah, it's on there. I know on the water bill, you have the option to do that, and I think when they originally set up the website years ago, that was the only option. And then I think later on, they added the debit card, credit card thing, and then that's when you started getting charged fees.
You have to really watch your bill on the water, on the automatic payments, because sometimes you will think, sometimes you have automatic payments, the next time your payment doesn't get taken out. It is, and so then you get a notification that your bank doesn't pay it, it's been declined, it is, it is almost a hassle, so I went, I went back and I put in my checking account information to see if that, that would work, because I was using, uh, Bank of E O, and my card would, it would always get declined by the server. It is.
Because it didn't recognize it, or.
I, I don't know what the deal is, but, um, I've had nothing but heartache over it. So if you don't watch it, you might get a three hundred dollar bill and says, oh, by the way, you haven't paid for the last three minutes, like I.
Automatic payment.
And it's like, oh, there's a three hundred, no wonder I had extra money.
Well, so, so, so what they're saying is the city, that particular city was encouraging their residents to set it up that way instead of the card, but I know, like, I walked in, I didn't know it was available, because when I walked in, it was like, oh, do you want to, it was like right at the beginning, do you want to just set it up the auto payments? And so they just, you know, they set it up on my card, right, but had I known, like, I, I, I would rather save the city some money, right, like, I didn't know that was an option.
And I'm really old school, I just tell my bank to cut a check and put it in the mail.
And, yeah.
It's very effective, it goes every time.
You don't pay it, you save money too.
That's true, that's true, maybe I could go on those vacations with the keeper.
Worked very hard during my vacation, I worked very, very hard to take my wife on my vacation.
And a little water bill skipped in.
Still have to pay it, Eric can't get his water shut off.
That would be more quiet.
You had a big old hole in front of your house for three months, it was shut off for a while.
Yeah, I did, but that was not due to non-payment. That was due to an accident. I'm calling it an accident. Any other councilors report, comments?
The only thing I would say is that, uh, at the senior center, I've asked, uh, the health district, uh, to come and speak to us next, on Thursday. And I want, uh, to speak about hospice and their swing bed, and things like that, that we pay taxes for on this end, and I think we, because we don't know about them, the, the services offered, we don't utilize them. And that we're all accustomed to driving to hermister. Just because we're accustomed to that. But, anyway, so that's the speaker, uh, this time, and then I think on Tuesday, whatever the seventeenth or nineteenth or something, will be, I think, uh, Shagmar will come and talk about the part.
So next, this coming Thursday, like two days from now, or a week from this Thursday?
The nine, two days from now.
Okay.
I'll send out my.
Noon, the. By text, like you do.
Uh, I have to, yes.
Whatever that little blue thing is, I'll be calling.
Any other counselor comments? Go ahead, do your thing.
The, uh, Christmas lights turned out great this year, so thank you guys very much, taking time out of your days.
Yeah. Throw his hand off the. No, that's the mouse.
I have, uh, two comments, uh. One is about B C D A, I would like to see the council and the B C D A have meetings to be able to try to generate, to be able to utilize a direction that we both want to go, so we don't feel like we're competing against each other. I think that would be really good, sees the City of Boardman and the B C D A, they share their ideas, we share our ideas, trying to get to a common ground of building Boardman, right now.
And a shared vision.
It very well be that way, I don't think that it's that way right now, and I would love to see those two entities that get a tremendous amount of money being able to do that. My next comment was a comment I would share, that I think's been an ongoing thing about employees and their payroll and their pay, correct. And I think you know what, you know what I'm talking about, um, that they are, uh, pretty frustrated, and uh, my comment is, is, uh, maybe I should have just talked to you behind the scenes, but, um, I, I told them I would share that we need to really work hard to make sure our employees pay every month this year, and, and, uh, other than that, that is all the comments that I had as mayor, and therefore I will ensure this meeting, this meeting is ensured.
Might be a record.